I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'd like to call the council's workshop to order and welcome the members of the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority who are with us today. At this time, I will turn the floor over to the Virginia Beach Development Authority Chair, Dot Wood, to allow her to call the special meeting of the Virginia Beach Development Authority to order.
Thank you, Mayor. I call the special meeting of the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority to order, and will read the text of my letter calling the special meeting. To the Honorable Commissioners of the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority, dear Commissioners, in accordance with Article 3 of the bylaws of the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority, I hereby call a special meeting of the Development Authority with the purpose of participating in a joint city council development authority workshop consisting of briefings concerning the Dome Project to begin at 3:30 PM Tuesday, August 14th, Building 19 of the municipal complex, 2416 Borhouse Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia. If a form of the Development Authority is present, then following the briefings, the Development Authority may convene into closed session for the sole purpose of discussing the Dome Project. Sincerely, Dorothy Wood, Chair.
We will now begin the briefings identified in the agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council, Members of the Development Authority, welcome, and thank you for indulging the staff today. Appreciate your public being here, as well as the media. Today's agenda is solely focused on our Dome Site Development, an opportunity that has been wanting for almost three decades.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sabine.
Since the designation in the menu, we are proud to have with us a portfolio of consultants, of experts in their field. As you received in your Friday packets, the completed reports, analysis and reports that were jointly funded with our developer and hopefully partner going forward, Venture Development and the city. We are very pleased to present to you today an agenda full of information, and then hopefully an opportunity to move into executive session where we will get, dive deep into the numbers and the staff recommendation. So to kick this off, I'll ask our executive lead for this project, Deputy City Manager Ron Williams, to begin with a note.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'll very quickly give a recap of where we've been, and then we'll dive right in and get to the information of the day, and look at the conclusions that we have before us. As a reminder, this iteration of our attempt for Dome Site Development kicked off at the beginning of last year with our request for qualifications for an operator-developer for the site. And specifically after lessons learned from previous iterations and what we saw going on the marketplace, we asked that our respondents look at a mixed-use development that had a combination of residential office and retail, that we have entertainment concepts, that we felt that there was a minimum 3,500-seat entertainment performance venue that was needed in the market. We were looking for unique or new-to-market retail and authentic restaurants, and again, residential but not as the primary use, and that there was year-round programming for both locals and tourist delight. So we've gone through a significant selection process and vetting to bring us to where we are today. We reviewed and interviewed four teams, and then in November of this past fall, the Development Authority passed a resolution selecting Venture Realty Group as the exclusive developer-operator. We then approved a series of cost-sharing studies, and that's what we're hearing about today is those findings. Those studies, along with a significant public engagement and public input process, helped the concepts that were presented to us by Venture last fall to refinement of a proposal for form of development that we will see today. The studies have been complete, and now we're at the point to see the findings and move forward with recommendations for terms for a development agreement. So as a reminder about the studies that we did, there were five that were authorized by the Development Authority and four have been completed to date. We wanted to know the market demand, to validate what we thought and had seen in the market to affirm our recommendations for the size of an entertainment venue. We wanted to make sure that the demand for recommendations of the retail mix was confirmed, understand the overall economic impact analysis, and then right-size the parking for the form of development. Our next steps after this will be to go into closed session where we will discuss future terms of a potential development agreement. I'll turn it over now to Mike Culpepper to give his overview of the evolution of the project. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Chairwoman Wood, members of the City Council and the Authority. My name is Mike Culpepper, and I'm one of the managing partners with Venture Realty Group, and I'm pleased to be able to present to you our vision for the transformation of the Virginia Beach Oceanfront. And we use the word "transform" with emphasis and with deliberate purpose because from the very beginning of this process, we have sought to make dramatic positive change, not just at the resort area, but in the City of Virginia Beach as a whole. And today, we want to ask you to take a step back and look at the oceanfront anew as though you are a visitor, or as though you are a retiree in Kempsville who hasn't been to the oceanfront since you were a kid. We want you to look at the oceanfront again, and you can see the beach, of course, you can see the boardwalk, but just steps to the west, you will see an aging, even deteriorating stock of buildings and businesses located along Atlantic and Pacific Avenue. And this is the product of an old outdated development pattern that promoted linear development along small narrow blocks with few amenities and scarce parking. This has led to a proliferation of souvenir shops, of t-shirt shops, of vape shops, and there is a place for this at the oceanfront, no doubt. There's a place for this at any resort community, but perhaps those are not the elements that are going to bring visitors back to the oceanfront. Perhaps they are not the elements that are going to bring our friends from the western part of the city back to the oceanfront. Now, there are jewels at the oceanfront, to be sure. There is awesome coastal craftsman architecture with old cottages and restaurants that we all love and we want to see preserved. There are contemporary, modern hotels that we want to patron, but the predominant development pattern has given us a very linear strip style of development. This issue is more than aesthetics. This issue also relates to behavior, and we think that there is a direct relationship between the conditions of the buildings and businesses at the oceanfront and the behavior that we currently see and we read about on Monday morning. So yes, we wish to transform, but in order to change, we need to do something big. We're not the first folks to think of something big for the Dome Site. In fact, this process has been going on since 1985, and we've actually put together a timeline of the sequence of events since 1985 when TRT submitted their mixed-use development plan. At the time, I was at Creed's Elementary School, but TRT was apparently a thing, and they had proposed a mixed-use development that had a transit emphasis, and the city looked at that, evaluated that, studied that, but ultimately did not pursue that plan. And in fact, it started a pattern which the city would receive a plan, the city would study a plan, the issue would solicit additional plans, study additional plans, and so on and so on. And I won't belabor the point by going through each of the milestones, but I do think it's important to recognize at least one of those milestones, that back in 1991, when Old Dominion University studied the Dome Site and concluded in all caps, "Do something now, the Dome has been studied to death." That was 1991. So in 2017, skipping ahead, we received the RFQ, and we were very pleased to be able to respond with a plan, and we delivered a plan that was very bold and included all of the elements that Ron discussed earlier with the mixed-use development, the new-to-market retail, the attractions, et cetera. But it also included a very bold image, a bold amenity. And furthermore, when we did that, we were thinking about the history of the Dome and thinking about what could we do to really change the trajectory of this site. Looking back, over 30 years, or more specifically since 1994, we've seen three mayors, five vice-mayors, 36 members of city council, over 10 development plans, over 10 developers, over 10 studies, and no project. So when we came to you with our plan last year, this was in the forefront of our mind. We really wanted to change that pattern. We wanted to break the paradigm and deliver something new and exciting. And that new, exciting plan took the form of the project that you see before you, or that you saw before you in 2017. It had a bold image of a surf park, a big blue amenity that had an open-air recreational vibe that promoted something that we haven't seen at the oceanfront, and that is this rebellion against block-by-block linear development. It was a very different development pattern. It had a very different scope and feel, and this resonated with many members of the committee who were reviewing these plans. And it resonated that we included attractions and experiential retail and all of the fun things that we want to see at the Dome Site and that we want to see at the oceanfront. And we started developing a little bit of buzz, and in fact, we met a guy named Pharrell Williams, and we started generating a lot of buzz, and through that, we were able to really connect with the community. And we were fortunate to be selected in 2017 to work forward on this project with you, the City of Virginia Beach. After we were selected in November, we endeavored on an extensive campaign of public engagement, and we're very proud of our outreach. We had conducted over 25 public and civic meetings and met with thousands of people. We had over 100 meetings with interested stakeholders and citizens on the project. And we hope that this model of public engagement will serve as a model for future public investment because it's important for us that we demonstrate that we are listening to the public and that we're taking their advice and counsel into consideration. One of the things that we did was a Chart the Future Initiative, which was an online poll conducted by the City of Virginia Beach. That online survey reached 2,500 respondents, elicited 1,400 or so comments, and we reviewed all of them. And what they demonstrated, what people liked and what people didn't like. So what they liked, what you see before you demonstrates that people overwhelmingly like to see the music venue and music events at the Dome Project. People overwhelmingly wanted to see convenient parking and integrated parking that could be easily accessible. This demonstrates that overwhelmingly people wanted to see the surf park and surf events, which you can see before you, event spaces, parking within one block. These were all very important elements for the respondents to that survey. And we also learned about what people don't like, and they tell you never to read the comments. Well, we read the comments, and some of them were, in fact, a little negative. Some of them looked at the oceanfront and said, "We can do better than this." And we internalized those comments, and we created a new plan that adapted those comments, good and bad. And that new plan did a couple of really important things. Firstly, it expanded the surf park. We'd received comments early in this process that we wanted a surf park that would accommodate large events, and that's what we did. We consulted with the technology provider and folks like USA Surfing to determine the appropriate specifications for national events, and we did that. Secondly, we wanted to create more space for the expanded experiential retail-type users. In order to do that, we needed depth, we needed volumes of space. So we worked with Virginia Beach United Methodist Church to put a portion of the project located to the east of Pacific Avenue, where you will see parking that will be convenient and safe for beachgoers. Next, we integrated parking within the building regimes that you see on the project. This convenient parking allows folks to not only access our offerings on the Dome Site, but also access the rest of the Vibe District. One important component that I really want to call out is the green public event space that's located immediately south of the surf park. This is unique in that we are creating a real public park that has the ability to overlook the surf park, to create a really cool and engaging environment. And one of the things that is really interesting about this is that we have it immediately adjacent to the entertainment venue. And for this entertainment venue, we wanted to do something different that separated us from other municipalities that had entertainment venues. We wanted to create a convertible venue. So this venue will be able to house 3,500 people to enjoy a show inside the venue. However, you do have the ability to open up retractable doors and project the stage out to then have a performance going out over that public space. So it allows us to have both a public space and a functional, dynamic, usable space for both the surf park and the entertainment venue. Next, we conducted a series of studies, which you're going to learn about today. These studies were very important for us to not only learn what we needed to do for each of those constituent elements, but seeing all the studies together, you really start to get a three-dimensional picture of what the project looks like. And as we went through this process, we saw two issues that continued to stick out and that we needed to address. One was parking. Parking's obviously a critical piece of any development project, particularly at the oceanfront, but you'll see here how it really shapes how we design the overall project. Next is design. We knew we wanted to elevate the level of design that you see at the oceanfront, beyond what you see today. And so these two elements looking together forced us to evolve this project into what you'll soon see. With regard to parking, the predominant parking system at the oceanfront, in addition to surface parking, is a series of pre-cast parking garages. Pre-cast garages are those garages that are essentially assembled onsite from pre-cast forms, and there are many advantages to pre-casts. They are very cost-effective, they cost less per space, but there's also disadvantages. Those disadvantages are that you cannot accommodate structure above those pre-cast decks. You cannot support large volumes of space being built above those decks. Further, you cannot accommodate large uses on the first and second floors because of the sheer walls. So for us to be able to execute a development plan that accommodated all of our objectives, we elected to design a mixed-use deck. And now, this mixed-use deck, it does cost more than a pre-cast deck, however, it does allow you to make more economical use of space by filling the entire developable envelope of the project. We're looking at this project not in two dimensions, but in three dimensions. So in order for us to go vertical, to create the mass above the parking, it was critical to do a poured-in-place mixed-use deck to support all that stuff, the fun stuff. Furthermore, these types of decks are more attractive and lend themselves to more attractive design. And so design is what we next looked at in incorporating these high-themed elements into the project. Now, this slide is not intended to criticize or castigate anyone at the oceanfront. Currently, at the oceanfront, you do see primarily wood-framed, stick-built, low-rise development, and that's by necessity because of the scarcity of land, the cost of land, the cost of construction. It is reasonable to see that in the marketplace. However, we have an opportunity to do something great, to do something better, to elevate the level of design, to have steel and concrete construction that will give us unique abilities to create building forms and shapes that you would not otherwise see. It would give us the opportunity to use different materials to clad our buildings other than traditional IFIS or Hardy plank. And furthermore, it would be made of storm-resilient materials, which is important for any coastal So through our design, we were inspired by an architect that we are working with named Chad Oppenheim, who is an architect of international renown, a friend of Pharrell's, who was working with us to develop a series of inspirational images that we used to design the images that you are going to see before you. And working with Chad, he came to the City of Virginia Beach. He and his team gave us some notes, gave us some images that will create a very unique appearance that will not be replicated soon in our city or elsewhere. So now, let's take a brief detour to talk about experiential retail. For those of you who have listened to me and talked about the Dome Project in detail at public presentations, we talk about experiential retail a lot because it's important, and it's one of the things that will help separate this project from the other projects that preceded us. Experiential retail has a lot of different definitions, but it's essentially it's where stores and commercial tenants have engaging experiences inside their physical space in order to attract people, in order to get people to stop buying at Amazon and to physically come in to a store. And some of the users that we are talking to right now can more appropriately be characterized as attractions. One such example is National Geographic Ultimate Explorer, and Nat Geo is the type of facility that some describe as an interactive family fun center where kids will have the ability to go through simulated rainforests, polar regions, outer space, the Jurassic time period to have puzzles, games, and interactive activities that will stimulate and be educational and fun. And one of the really cool things about Nat Geo is that they have an extensive content library that allows them to change these exhibits routinely. So if you come in January for a field trip to the National Geographic Ultimate Explorer, you can come back over your summer break in July and it'll be totally different, and that will help promote additional activity, additional trips to the oceanfront. Nat Geo Ultimate Explorer isn't our only prospect here. The creator of that is IP2. We're also working with them for the Bridge Concept, which is another virtual and augmented reality concept, concepts like Servios we are working with, others like Topgolf have indoor Topgolf simulated virtual reality experiences, Brooklyn Boulders, Synoplis, Synoplis Jr., the bowling concepts like River City Roll. All of these provide cool, engaging indoor activities that will bring people here in the off-season and the shoulder season, and also give visitors something to do on a rainy day. So now, we have to assemble this retail and the surf park and the office and all of these elements into a cohesive development plan. And so we have presented a massing model for you. This is not, obviously, a photorealistic depiction of what the plan is. It merely shows you the mass, the scope, and the size, and the relationship between all these buildings, but you can see that the units that we are presenting are substantially similar to the square footages and the units that you saw early in this process. With 264,000-plus square feet of retail, food and beverage, and cinema space, 150,000-square feet of office, 426 units, 2,005 parking spaces, and of course, the surf park and the entertainment venue. All told, this together will give us a world-class design, a state-of-the-art music venue, indoor attractions, an event-level surf park, and really maximize the economic impact of this project. And so we then translate this massing plan into the photorealistic depictions that you see before you. This is a depiction of the overall Dome Development Site, what we call the Wave. Most prominently featured is that surf park at three-and-a-half acres. Also prominent is Vibe Park, the green immediately south of that, and an entertainment venue with a very dramatic architectural element. You will also see an office building located to the east of Pacific, and we can go through and see some other depictions. This is looking toward the ocean. You can see the change in elevation in the green area that creates that amphitheater-style perspective. And then looking toward the west, you get a good feel for the dimension of these buildings. One unique aspect of the design that Hanbury has been working on is that the buildings are designed to cascade down from very tall down to a dimension that more closely approximates the neighborhood located to the west. And next, we'll see the Dome itself. This is the entertainment venue, and it has a very dramatic roof element that is designed to evoke the memories and the imagery and the silhouette of the old Virginia Beach Dome. In the comments that we received during the survey, one of the ones that repeatedly appeared was, "We loved the Dome. We loved the image of the Dome. This is our way of paying tribute and respecting the Dome that we all cherish." So now, we're going to take a quick look at some numbers. Paul Lambert's going to be here, and I'm stealing some of his thunder right now, but we at least wanted to highlight some of the economic impacts of this project. During construction, we estimate a total economic output of over $500 million. On an annual basis thereafter, we look at approximately $150 million per annum. And to give you some perspective here, in a recent survey that the City of Virginia Beach conducted, it was stated that an aircraft carrier produces roughly $300 million of economic output. So that gives you a perspective of $150 million as roughly being half of an aircraft carrier, very significant. We also want to emphasize the direct fiscal impacts related to the project, which includes $8.1 million-plus of tax revenues that would be generated that does not include parking fees or leases paid back to the city. And moving onward, we want to talk a little bit about indirect impacts because Paul doesn't dig into indirect impacts, but we think it's important to present an overall image of the entire development. Anytime you develop at the oceanfront, you need to talk about net new room nights, and we estimate that we produce roughly 80,000 per annum. We also produce an affluent visitor to the surf park. And next, we produce an indirect value that I think is worth studying for a minute. Oftentimes, when we talk about the impact of public-private partnerships, we do that in terms of direct revenues. We talk about what direct revenues do those projects produce for us as a city, but we don't often talk about the indirect revenues. That is, what is happening around that investment that is creating the additional revenue that also benefits our city. So we undertook our own study, and we looked at two other projects that we have invested in over the last decade. We looked at 31st Street, and we looked at Town Center, and we compared that to what we see in the city as a whole. In the city as a whole, over the last 12 years, we actually have a very modest escalation in real estate assessments. It's actually less than 1% looked on a whole. When you compare this to the real estate assessments that you see around those major investments that we have invested in, you'll see a dramatic difference. And in fact, if you were to draw a line around 31st Street and see the development that has occurred in the immediate vicinity, you will see annual rates of escalation in excess of 8%. And that's a dramatic difference between less than 1% and greater than 8%. And this is a significant impact that I hope we all take into account when we look at the viability of this type of project. Now, these are the revenues that will hopefully allow us to fund the priorities that we're all talking about, to fund the priorities and the capital investments that we need to make in the future. So I would be remiss if I didn't talk about one of those priorities, and that's stormwater. We wanted to squarely address stormwater because we believe that it is one of the most important existential issues that we as a city are going to face in our lifetimes. We don't want to run from it, we want to deal with it and address it in a major way, and we have. And it's really two ways. First, we address it by creating this catalyst for economic development that's going to produce revenues, that's going to continue to subsidize stormwater improvements in the future. And secondly, we do it in a direct way in the central beach. We have a unique feature in our project. It's a three-and-a-half-acre lagoon. That three-and-a-half-acre lagoon harvests rainwater. It collects rainwater, and it filters rainwater. We are investing in the filtration. We might as well take the rainwater from the rest of the site and use it in the lagoon, and that's what we intend to do. We have a unique opportunity to harvest rainwater throughout this entire project and use it for our central amenity. Further, we are going to create new pervious surface area, new green area. We are going to upgrade the existing stormwater facilities. Today, there is very little pervious surface area. It's a parking lot primarily, and it has low-stormwater facilities, or it has stormwater facilities that aren't modern in any way, shape, or form. We are going to change that, and we are going to not only have a positive effect on our site, but we hope to have a positive effect on stormwater around us as well. So stormwater is just the beginning. We've designed this project to really change the paradigm, to dramatically reshape people's perception of what you can do with a development like this, and to dramatically change people's perception of public-private partnerships, and change people's perception of what we can do as a city. Our goal is not to simply fill hotel rooms at the oceanfront. Our goal is to be a catalyst for investment around the project. These are the revenues that we intend to generate to sustain us in the future. And further, we want that person from Kempsville to come back to the oceanfront. That person who hasn't been back here since they were a teenager, we want That person who hasn't been back here since they were a teenager, we want them to return. We want that person from Centerville and Princess Anne and Bayside to return to the oceanfront. The oceanfront is where we saw our bands, our favorite bands, and where we went out to eat, we had our first dates. The oceanfront used to be a place where we made our memories. And unless we have a dramatic impactful project like this, we could lose that. So after 30 years, let's get something done.
So next, council members of the Development Authority, we have David Stone from Stone Planning, and he'll be focusing his report on his analysis of the entertainment venue.
Hang on just a minute. Are you comfortable using?
Again, I'm David Stone. I'm the president of Stone Planning, based out of Chicago. On our team here, also in attendance, we have my partner Joe Widman, the Rooney Sports and Entertainment Group, Tom Rooney and Josh Rooney, and also on our team but not here is Nielsen, who you probably know as the TV Ratings Company, but they do a lot more than that. First of all, we could probably take draft off of this, since I am here, and this is obviously the real thing, but it's the same version. So, we collectively and collectively work in the planning of sports, entertainment, and other public assembly venues. So, we're, you know, fortunate to be involved in this. We have worked on multiple other kind of indoor/outdoor entertainment venues like this in the last couple of years. It's a kind of a popular trend recently, so we've got some experience, and actually, Tom, who will come up later, and Josh, have some experience in the actual development of similar facilities like this. So, we have a brief set of slides here. First, we wanted to pull out some kind of industry trends from our report, obviously all the details in the full report, but looking at kind of the live music and entertainment industry. Hopefully, this is big enough for you all to see. If you follow the entertainment industry at all, you'll see a lot of articles these days that quote people literally saying, "It's a good time to be in the entertainment business and the music business." Technology has changed in a lot of ways, in ways that we consume music in particular, where music, people don't, you know, as I'm sure you all know, people don't spend money on recorded music like they used to. The formula has kind of flipped, where in the past, artists would tour to support their, the sales of their recorded music to help people buy albums. Now it's the other way around. People put out albums so they could have an excuse to tour and sell tickets and make money that way. That's where the bulk of the revenue comes from for performers now, how they make their living. So as physical sales have gone down, the number of tickets bought for live events are increasing even as ticket prices are increasing. There are more shows that are being put on year after year, so both supply and demand are increasing. Again, it's a good time to be in the music industry. Because of the size of this venue, again, roughly about 3,000 seats indoor, about 5,000 or so outdoor, that positions you in a really good place to attract the majority of touring events. If you look at the top 200 tours, again, this is music, but also more broadly entertainment includes some concerts and speakers and comedians, things like that. Over a third of these tours average 5,000 or fewer attendees per show. Another 20, almost 20%, are under 7,500. So over half of these tours are 7,500 or fewer people. Again, you'll be positioned to attract most of them, and these are just the top 200. So below that 200, from 201 on down, you're obviously fitted to attract and accommodate those as well. Last bullet on this slide, Live Nation. In terms of promotion, promoters, this is a kind of whole, could be a whole study unto itself, but the promoter industry has changed and has consolidated very much to the point where Live Nation is a dominant player. They're active here locally, obviously, at the big amphitheater. They will be, you know, welcome to participate and bring their shows to this facility, which is obviously a major plus for it. Again, they control 40% of shows out there that are touring. One other section of the report, we looked around the country, as I said at the beginning, this is kind of a trend, these kind of convertible indoor/outdoor facilities with the stage that one way, you know, faces indoor in one direction and outdoor in the other direction. We took a real detailed look at three of them around the country in very similar settings. By that, I mean in mixed-use districts, entertainment districts, some of them are, you know, they're different sizes. The one in Pittsburgh, for example, has the NFL stadium and Major League Baseball stadium. The one in Columbus has the NHL arena in a minor league baseball stadium. The one in Irving outside of Dallas is more retail and experiential, retail-focused, without major sports facilities. But again, we focused on these three. I won't go through every number on the slide, but they're all generally in the same capacity range as we're talking here, with, in most cases, multiple capacities on the indoor side. You can cut it down to more of a club with, you know, anywhere from 2, 3, 4, 500 seats for smaller shows or private shows, weddings, bar mitzvahs, meetings, corporate events, trade shows, things like that. They're very flexible, particularly on the indoor side, and they can do really anything that you're not limited by your creativity for. Again, I won't go through all the numbers, but here and in the report in full detail, we go through the number of events they host every year, the attendance levels, the ticket prices, and they're a major factor in helping us develop our assumptions and projections for this facility. Going to the rest of our report, the first section is a market analysis. I imagine the other consultants have their own version of their market analysis, too. Hopefully, we're fairly similar in some capacities, but we focused on the market as it relates to kind of the consumption of live entertainment as well as the advertising and marketing of these events. This is where Nielsen helped us out on this report. They defined the designated market area as about a 450,000-plus-person market. Permanent residents doesn't include the millions of, tens of millions of visitors you have coming throughout the year, which is obviously a bonus, you know, an additional set of consumers to buy tickets and attend events. Looking at the detailed characteristics of the market, overall, it's a very attractive market. You all live here, you probably know this as well as anyone. Compared to the nation as a whole, it's a relatively young market. Income levels are relatively high, education levels are relatively high, employment levels are relatively high. Those all generally lend themselves to, you know, having disposable income around to spend on things like concerts. We also looked in detail at activities of the resident, of the permanent resident population. Again, compared to the country as a whole, more likely to attend live entertainment, concerts in general, and also most particular types of music, as well as comedy clubs. So again, everything positive from a market perspective. Going back to some of the things I touched on earlier in the industry overview, you know, looking at the local market for entertainment, obviously, there are a number of facilities, not only in Virginia Beach but in this DMA market, both indoor and outdoor facilities. As Mike said earlier, and actually gave me more of a history lesson than I knew, I could probably update this. I said, and we say in our report, that a need has been identified for an indoor venue club in this size range since 2002. I think you took it back to 1991. I didn't know it went back that far, but since the dome closed, since the pavilion closed, there's been a pressing need for an indoor venue in Virginia Beach. In particular, I think at least one of the studies called for at the beachfront, going back multiple decades now. There would be a little bit of competition for the indoor venue, mostly from Chrysler Hall and Norva, somewhat lesser, to a lesser extent, from the Sandler Center. They're all very different venues, slightly different capacities. Chrysler Hall and the Sandler Center obviously are more performing arts venues with permanent seating, less of a club. This will be a little bit more similar to the Norva. So a little bit of competition, but mostly, this is, again, a new facility that a need has been identified for decades. On the outdoor side, similar, you know, there are existing venues, both in Virginia Beach, the big amphitheater, and the smaller one in Portsmouth. We think there would be some competition, but not much. The VUHLA, so I don't have to say the whole thing, is a much bigger venue. They do do some smaller shows, but they're really not best suited for that venue. They would be better suited for this venue here at the Wave. So, again, we think this is overall a significant addition to the market. Obviously, also, there's a lot of free programming that's done, particularly at the beachfront. From everyone we've talked to, both from the promoter side and the city side, that this facility and this development, this site, would be very additive and complimentary to the activities that are already going on and wouldn't take away from anything. So, after all this market analysis, we're in a position to make some conclusions and recommendations about the facility, both the indoor and outdoor venue. As I said, it's a very strong market. The demographics are strong. The activities that the residents participate in are strong. You've got the big bonus of a huge tourist base, particularly in certain times of the year. You're at the right size on both the indoor and outdoor venues. Like I said before, and Mike said, there's long been identified a need, particularly on the indoor side, for a venue of this type at this general location. We expect minimal competition with existing venues, particularly existing venues in Virginia Beach, as I mentioned before. And for this last half of the slide, I'm going to bring Tom up to talk a little bit kind of how this venue might, will fit in more practically in terms of its capacity and routing, in terms of other venues in the area, booking policies, and a little more detail about kind of the operations of the facility.
Thanks, Ed. I share the love affair with the long-lost venue that you had here, the dome. I was a manager of the Pittsburgh Civic Arena in the 80s, and we would come down to Virginia Beach, remember Beach, and I remember coming down, my son's in our company right now, and we went over, we saw the Allman Brothers back in the 80s, and we said, "Wow, this is a cool venue." But, you know, all venues have a life. They come and go, except for the Roman Coliseum, of course. But, you know, this facility follows what is a more recent trend of what I call the boutique venue era. You know, those of us who have been around a long time remember, we had the multipurpose venues, especially those concrete domes, domes, back when the NFL and MLB teams played there. Then we went into sort of the purpose-built venues where each of the teams would have their own venues. And for us, we were opening amphitheaters from London to Los Angeles when I worked for Pace. That was our version of a purpose-built venue, such as the venue that you have in Virginia Beach. So we had 20 of those around the country. We were putting those out all the time. The idea of this boutique era that we're in is, really comes down to the ability to what I call plug-in and play. The infrastructure, the investment is in the state-of-the-art sound and lights so that an artist can come in and literally plug-in and play. And as those of you who've been around the event business know, you can pay as much to set up a show for sound and lights and all the other costs attendant that you might pay an artist. In this case, you know, everything is really built in. So, we had the ability to be involved in a venue called Stage AE in Pittsburgh. My family, I hope there's no Ravens fans here, because my family owns the Pittsburgh Steelers, so I should say that, but we became partners with a company out of Columbus, Ohio, called Promowest, and that venue is now in its eighth year, and it's sensational. A venue that's not on that list yet, because it hasn't opened yet, but it is soon to open, is a venue in actually the Omaha market, where David and I did a study, and they will be building a similar venue. I think the critical things about any marketplace and the way I used to look at them at Pace was defining what that marketplace is. Now, it's a little bit different in the days before social media, it was largely contained by the radio stations and TV stations and newspapers that served you. With social media, of course, you're connected, you know, to the world. You know, there were some people sitting across from us at lunch yesterday who came in for the Def Leppard Journey Show, and they've been following that band around the country, you know, because that's what, you know, that's their summer. So, but, you know, there's certainly enough people here. You actually have two markets. You have, you know, the resident market, which is served year-round, and then you do have the seasonal market. This is a situation where this will serve, so you really have two markets. The other thing is, you have a niche. You know, we oftentimes will go into a situation where someone will do, want to do a baseball stadium that turns into a hockey arena ultimately, but what you really need to do is find that niche. If you try to make a niche, you know, in the long run, that's not going to work out for you, or you're going to be a shooting star. And the third thing, and, you know, I really can't emphasize this more, you have a superhero's operator here. You know, there's not a lot of people out in this room who probably know the company called Ophu Group, but they're a relatively new group. We just had a situation where David and I did a study for Robert Morris University, and they were awarded the management right for that venue. But that's made up of some of the most really well-known people in the industry. Irving Azoff from the entertainment side, Tim Lewicki, who had a big career at AEG, Peter Luco, those kinds of people bring, they just added a good friend of mine by the name of Hank Bate, and of course, we've got Doug Higginson here. That's tremendously impactful. These people will not wait for the phone to ring. They will not wait for the phone to ring. So you're going to have absolutely the most, you know, aggressive sort of leadership when it comes to that. At the same time, this will be an accessible venue from the standpoint of welcoming in local promoters, national promoters who want to come in. The idea is just, you know, we want to have the show, you know, in our venue. You know, early on, generally, newer venues get sort of the nod when it comes to decision-making because there's a, it's unproven formula that, you know, a show will do 25% more in a new venue for the first year because people want to try it out. But I think when they try out this venue, they're going to, they're going to know it's got tremendous legs. And I think you're on the front end of both the wave pole aspect and also this live entertainment venue. So we're really excited for you, and we can't wait to come down for the opening night.
So, we've got one more slide. So the last section of our report has all the gory details, but we've got three summary tables here. So, we forecasted out, based on these recommendations and our market conclusions, the operations of this facility, both indoor and outdoor, under one roof for its first 10 years. So that's events, attendance, revenues, expenses, and then the economic impacts flowing out of those operations. So, again, I'm not sure how easily this is, easy this is to see from at least the back of the room, but we have a handful of event types that we forecast out on an annual basis, indoor, outdoor, other types of entertainment, adding up to about 220, 225 total events per year. This is based on all of our market analyses, including the other facilities here in the local and regional market, the national facilities we looked at, things like that. So we've got the number of events, total attendance adding up to about 340,000 per year. The middle table is the operating revenues and expenses of the facility, about $9 million in revenues, about $8 million in expenses, resulting about $1 million, $1.1 million in net operating revenue. And then the last table to the right are the economic and fiscal impacts, based off of our assumptions, again, all in the full report, of where people come from for these events. It's focused on the out-of-towners, how long they stay, how many people they bring, how much they spend every day on different items, what that translates into job creation and income for local residents, and tax revenues for local government, and then separately the economic, the impacts from the construction project. Again, just going through those numbers really quickly, it's about $18 million in spending per year, 100 or so jobs, four, almost $4.5 million in earnings to local residents from those jobs, about 20,000 room nights from out-of-town visitors coming in for events, and a couple hundred thousand dollars in tax revenues to the city. And then again, those are, those would recur on an annual basis. Obviously, they'll change a little bit from year to year based on the actual usage of the facility, and then there's the one-time construction impacts from the actual construction project, based on some assumptions of where the contractors are based, you know, what percent are local, and things like that. So that is our presentation. I don't know if I'm staying up for questions now, or if we're doing that later, or what's next on the agenda.
We can come back.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to move through the briefings, David. Thank you very much.
All right, I'll turn over. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next, we have Nick Agalanian, who's going to provide his review assessment of retail for this project.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and guests and visitors. Nice to be here and happy to address you on the retail aspects of this project. Just to give you a little context, our report on the retail is over 50 pages long, and given the nature of the project, it doesn't lend itself well to PowerPoint. So, I will be describing the findings of our report separately, but I've been asked to provide you with a little context on retail. And just for a little background on myself, I'm the founder and president of SiteWorks. I've been in retail for 30 years. I teach the only retail development course at the University of Maryland, and I also teach in the International Council Shopping Center educational curriculum. I also wrote the retail chapter of the Urban Land Institute's primary development book in its last printing in 2012. What you're about to see is unique and different than what you've probably seen anywhere else, so let's get right into it. I want to give you a little bit of context into how retail works in the United States. We're going to keep this very brief, but I think it's important that you get this context because it's very critical to understanding this project. So, we've all heard about all this, right? Retail's a mess, as we know, right? Department stores closing, et cetera. I'm going to give you the essence of my 16-week full semester course at University of Maryland in about five minutes here. So, put your thinking caps on and take good notes, and I'll answer questions later. So, here's what's going on here in the United States, and I want to just put this in context. The United States has 8 billion square feet of retail, and retail is a $5 trillion business in the United States. For most of the last century, retail has been conducted in the United States either on main streets, in city downtowns, or in the regional, the 3,000 regional malls that are thought to have destroyed the downtowns. In fact, it's been a very logical process. There wasn't a shopping center industry before the 20th century, and there are changes happening in the 21st century, but this is how we got there. So, we started out with retail on the streets in downtown, and in the 1950s, in the 1940s, we really started to mass-produce automobiles. In the 1950s, we started to build roads, and when we built roads, people moved. And contrary to the thinking of most people in the industry, the shopping centers and the malls did not move people out of cities. The people moved out of cities because of the automobiles and the roads, and shopping followed. And this is the format. What they essentially did was took the format that was working in downtowns, which was department stores with shops between them, and replicated out in the suburbs, typically along high-traffic road areas, but without many of the other amenities of the city, including the political, cultural, arts, and other infrastructure of cities. So, you ended up with these large concrete boxes that were how people shopped. And that was killed by something. It was killed by what our industry built for most of the last 30 years, which is big-box retail. Big-box retail, to keep this very simple, these boxes that you shop in today, they represent the departments that used to be the departments and department stores. And those of us who are old enough, remember when department stores had 100 to 150 departments. Today, what's left of that business has only four major departments, which are under continuing assault. Apparel, cosmetics, and related, housewares, and some have furnishings, furniture. But this is what changed it, not Amazon. And for those of you who are interested, the popular narrative, if you read and listen, is that Amazon is destroying retail. Amazon represents less than 1% of US retail. Less than 1% of a $5 trillion market. And if you walk out on the street and ask most of the people walking down the street, and I'm sure many people in this room, but if you go to your constituents and ask them what percentage of retail is happening on the internet, they will tell you that it's, because I do it all the time, and the average answer will be between 40 and 80%. And the average person giving that answer will tell you that Amazon's doing the lion's share of that. So, it's actually 9.5% of all retail is happening on the internet, and just for those interested, that's 1.2% below where catalog topped out. In my larger presentation, I show some clips from the Wall Street Journal and New York Times from the 1960s and 80s and 90s, where they were believing that catalogs were going to kill brick-and-mortar retail. So, with that change, this is what's happened in the business since then. And I'm giving you this background for good reasons, which you'll see in a minute. That's the market share changes in discount versus department stores. And just to put it into perspective, here's a more recent view of just a 10-year period. And if you look on the left side, you'll see the changes from where department stores dominated to where TJ Maxx and Ross have taken most of that market share. That's where it's gone, to big boxes. The only major big-box retailers that are growing today at a very significant rate nationally are apparel, housewares, and furniture. TJX being the company that's doing most of the damage, and the department store industry today is at below $70 billion in a $5 trillion economy, and that is less than half the size of Costco alone. So, the department store industry is largely irrelevant today, and we will see another 600 of the 800 malls that are left go out of business in the next 10 years. What does that mean for this project? What does that mean for how retail works in the 21st century? Well, first of all, this is how retail is organized. 85% of all retail is what I call commodity retail. Families spend primary household funds to replenish things they use on a regular basis. Most of the people in this room have incomes significantly higher than the average household income in America. So, many people in this room might not even shop in a Walmart, but there are 4,700 Walmarts in the United States. It represents over 25% of the US grocery sales alone. So, in most of commodity retail, which is 85% of a $5 trillion business, people are motivated by price and convenience. In the rest, which is what this project is about, they're spending discretionary time and discretionary income to bring pleasure. There is a big difference between buying bread, butter, and diapers when you need them and spending money for pleasure, which this project's about. And this is how it works, and you'll all understand this. Those are the six primary ways in which consumers buy commodity goods, and you all understand this from your own lives. You trade off time versus price. So, you can buy a roll of Bounty paper towels at a 7-Eleven. You can also buy it at a Costco, and you're going to pay a considerable difference, and you're going to buy a different quantity. It's a very sophisticated business, and I don't have the time allotted to be able to explain it in more detail, but you are making subconscious decisions all day long, every day of the week, every day of the year, on trading time versus price. That's why you would buy one pack of gum at a convenience store in front of a Walmart for a dollar while you could walk into Walmart and get six packs of the same gum for the same dollar. You see Amazon on the bottom. Amazon is the only retailer that can actually deliver on both ends of the spectrum. They can deliver the highest price because they can deliver something you can't find locally. They can also deliver the lowest price. And today, most of the audiences I speak to, and I speak around the world, several, about a dozen times a year, dozen, dozen and a half times a year, the audience indicate increasingly that they're buying things on the internet that they can't find locally. The retailers and the consumers have figured out that for low-volume items, it's a more efficient way to distribute through the internet. And again, Amazon represents less than 1% of US retail. It's a growing company, it's a very successful company, it's a great company. It's a fairly average retailer, as retail goes. So, if that's the way commodity retail works, and that's 85% of retail, this is the rest that we're talking about here. This is discretionary retail. And contrary to what you hear, experience and place do not matter in commodity retail. They only matter when you're trying to generate a response, an emotional response, and this is all about making emotional connections, which is what going to the beach is about, and ultimately what this project is about. You can get there one of two ways. You can get there by delivering best-in-class shops. That's Tyson's Corner, where I live, up in the Washington DC area. That's Rodeo Drive in Los Angeles. You can also get there by offering best-in-class place, and that's Disney World. And I want to talk about Disney World for a second because Disney World is what you compete with at the beach in Virginia Beach. So, when you deliver the best-in-class place, people will spend disproportionately. So, at Disneyland, it is 100% of its square footage is retail, except for the attractions. And most of us have been there. What do you do all day long at Disney World? You spend money. And you start before you ever get to Disney World because you spend when you park, you spend when you go through the gate, and then you only have just begun to spend. It's the most successful shopping center in the world, and it's the most successful shopping center in the world because it offers the best place in the world via the perception of the customer. That's the business you're in. And since Virginia Beach, for many reasons having to do with the competitive world we live in, is not going to be able to deliver best-in-class merchandise, for it to be more competitive as a specialty retail market, it needs to deliver great experiences and make emotional connections with customers. And that's what this chart is all about. This is the five primary ways in which specialty retail is delivered in the United States. I will tell you that the Wave is not going to be represented there because there is no project like it in the United States. In fact, there is no project like it that I'm aware of in the world. I researched the Wave industry, the Wave Pool industry. I worked with some of the people who did some of the Wave Pools in Europe, South Africa, and there is no project I'm aware of that fits, fits even close to the way this project is conceived. This, by the way, is the statistics on the internet. This was as of the end of last year. We've updated, it's about 9.5% today. The rate of growth in internet sales is dropping. The total percentage of it is increasing, and as I mentioned, the total percentage is now at 9.5%, not 80%, and that's of a $5 trillion business. And here's a little some statistics just to lay out the Amazon. There's Amazon at $79 billion, that's at the end of last year, but the Amazon does not, Amazon did $179 billion in total revenue last year. Only 79 of it was in retail, and a large portion of that was not them acting as a retailer, it was them acting as a shipping agent, and that's not retail. So, the percent is actually, when you get down to it, under 1%. All right, so I want to talk about our findings, and I want to talk a little bit about the background of the project. So, we are, we analyze this project in the context of the specialty retail market. And the specialty retail market in the Hampton Roads area is extremely crowded with a long history of project failures. I was here last night, I met with the person who just bought Peninsula Town Center up in Hampton for one-third of what it was originally built for. And that, unfortunately, that history is all around this area. Similar story, the second-worst Nordstrom in the chain operates in downtown Norfolk. So, we're in a crowded market, but we're in a submarket within the crowded market, and that's the beach area. And let me just mention something about your beach. Your beach is the only beach I'm aware of between Maine and Florida that is attached to a large city, with the exception of the New York City beaches, which I don't think function quite the same way. So, you have this unique situation of having a beach, not unlike Ocean City in my home state of Maryland, that's connected to your second-largest city. If that were the case where I live, it'd be connected to Montgomery County outside of Washington DC. That complicates matters a bit for you all, in many ways, more ways than I have time to talk about here today, but it affects our findings. The second thing is, like I said, there's more specialty retail in the region than there needs to be. So, the emphasis on experience is really important because we're at the beach where people go for experiences, right? The last thing is, or the last preliminary point is that this project, where it's located, is not on the beach. It's at the beach, but not on the beach. That could be perceived as a problem if it wasn't conceived correctly, but conceived the way it's conceived, it actually will serve a function of connecting four different districts. It'll end up connecting, the way it's been designed, it will connect the beach to the vibe district, the emerging vibe district, to the emerging arts district, and to the convention center and sports facility. And the fact that this is an open-air project with porous edges helps accomplish that. If this were done in the nature of a mall or an enclosed arena, everything was under one roof, it wouldn't be able to do that. But this is able to do that because it opens up to the neighborhoods around it, which is critical. I want to mention a couple of facts about the surf industry and the Wave industry. In doing our report, we actually went in-depth into the surf industry. The surf industry is a 35-million-person industry. It's growing at 10% to 15% a year, and there is no surf park in the United States that is both located at a beach and designed to operate 12 months of the year, and connected to a retail facility that will have the nature and quality of the entertainment that's going to be at this project. It will function along with the National Geographic, the theater, the bridge, and most importantly, the restaurants. The restaurants, some people, I think, might view the restaurants as a threat to existing restaurants, but I believe the quality and type of restaurants here will be differentiated from the restaurants that are elsewhere in the market. I believe this is a case where, not unlike what happened in Las Vegas when Sheldon Adelson opened the Venetian, where everybody thought that was going to collapse the market. It was going to bring too much capacity in the market and collapse it. It actually redefined the market, and all the boats rose with it. And I think this project will be very similar in that regard, because it will connect all these places while not really harming and not really going after the essence of what's already in the market. And lastly, the parking facilities, along with the mix of uses, will allow this to stay active 12 months out of the year. If you combine that with the programming that the developer is planning, you could be very well having an active residential building, office building, and a surf competition going on in January, which is unheard of. I believe that has the potential to expand the market for this project and for Virginia Beach, well beyond what you're going to hear in the upcoming analysis that Paul Lambert is going to give you. And with that, I'll yield the floor to Paul.
Excellent briefing. Nick, the professor. I appreciate it. Paul Lambert is the, he's the center of the nucleus for the studies. He's going to present the project's economic impact assessment, and if you all were able to take time this weekend to read his report, you also know he's going to discuss a little bit about displacement. Paul's been kind enough to spend time with the staff, pre-briefing us. We were cognizant of his numbers as we go into the numbers portion in executive session. So, Paul, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and good afternoon to the council and the board. A pleasure to be here. Let me start by saying that our economic impact analysis actually builds off a series of other efforts that you've gone ahead and funded and had done under the auspices of looking at the Dome site. It builds off of Nick's work, certainly David's work, Wave Gardens' efforts as well. And we ourselves, as a firm, took an independent look at the demand for residential and office development to help drive what are the economic and fiscal benefits from the project. And so, what I'm presenting here today is, as the city manager said, is really building the end result, the ultimate result of the building blocks that you have before you. So, as you all know, there's two major proposed, public or private, projects, one of which now, I understand you've approved, which is the Sports Center, as well as the Dome. We've also have done previously, although it's not within this analysis, a separate look at what the impact is of the pier as well, but given where that is compared to these other projects, we haven't included it within this analysis. But certainly, our context of our analysis does that. And what we're, we have two principal goals of this effort, as we see it, that really help you in terms of answering what are two primary questions. Number one, do the economic and fiscal benefits of the Wave project exceed the public commitment of funds to the project, right? So, this is, that's the public sector's, is it an appropriate return on investment for the community? And secondly, when looking at the project in a citywide context, to what extent do the economic and fiscal benefits from the given project displace economic activity that's already taking place? So, this notion of displacement that you've looked at for virtually every project. So, what is displacement and why is it bad, or is it bad? Displacement in a market economy... Displacement in a market economy like ours in the U.S., we're not in Cuba, we're not in other countries that kind of try to control the economy. Displacement happens every day. There's new investment displaces other investment. The issue, of course, comes in if the public sector is making investment in projects that displace like investment. A similar restaurant, a fast-food restaurant replacing a fast-food restaurant doesn't really do much good for the local economy. But at the same time, from the same perspective, displacement's not the only measure, because it really is about these like investments. If the investments are dissimilar, there's no easy way of actually measuring that. And you have to look at it in a different context. There's some art to this and not all science. And let me give you some perspective, and Mike started to build on this, and Nick certainly built upon this as well. But here it is in some very stark numbers. There should be room to grow retail and restaurant expenditure in Virginia Beach, particularly on the beach. And this chart very briefly compares the shopping, food and beverage, and entertainment expenditure in a number of cities that collect the data like you collect the data. And what you see is, what's in red, the lines in red is Virginia Beach. Virtually every city, other city, Myrtle Beach, Miami, Vegas, Hawaii, Los Angeles, obviously different characteristics, but in many of them, and that's why you see the numbers all over the place, have higher per-person, per-day visitor expenditure than Virginia Beach does. Hilton Head actually collects this data, but not in a way that it's available for comparison, so Myrtle Beach is obviously the closest comparable. Virginia Beach should have some room to be able to grow this. You have a relatively affluent visitor. It's kind of changed over the years, but certainly relatively affluent, and there should be room to grow. And so this idea that this is all about displacement, there's actually more to this in terms of investing in new projects and what they mean to the local economy. So how do we actually measure the new business activity? And so if you measure a project like the Dome today, you're making an error in terms of looking at these projects. And when we started to look at this, we said, "Look, this project will not come online for another three years." The project, even if you were to make a decision today, you're two and a half years before the Dome actually has its first tenant. So the only way to look at this is by being prospective, looking forward, as opposed to looking what's happening in the market today. And so everything we did as part of this analysis was to try to get some sense of how this market changes and what the expectation is for change looking forward based upon all this research that you've now had done. So there's seven major drivers that we measured. Kind of, these are the principal drivers of future development. Number one, new residential units. We've made an estimate of that. New office workers in the market. Additional hotel guests. In this particular case, you have the Marriott, that oceanfront that's under construction right now, that's due to be delivered to the market in February of 2020. The Embassy Suites has been approved, also an opportunity likely to be delivered as well. New out-of-town participants, families, and coaches at the sports complex. So we measured that based upon the analysis of the CVB and other reports. New out-of-town attendance at the Waves' own performance space, based upon David's analysis, the Wave Garden surfers. New out-of-town visitors, finally, to Wave Attractions, as Mike talked about in Nat Geo and the Bridge. And so for each of these, we went through an analysis. I don't want to belabor the numbers too much, but we started to build up to estimate the amount of demand that was actually generated in terms of square feet of retail, entertainment, and restaurant space based upon each one of the drivers. So retail, restaurant, based upon our analysis of residential, we believe that there's another demand for about 30,000 square feet of retail space and another 5,000 square feet of restaurant space once that's built. In terms of office workers, spending every day, the Urban Land Institute does a study every couple of years now, it used to be every year, does a study of how much office workers actually spend close to work or on their way to and from work. So we have a good sense of worker expenditure. So our analysis shows that there's about 11,000 square feet of retail and another 3,000 square feet of restaurant demand from office workers. Hotel guests, those new hotel guests, based upon occupancy rate in the Marriott, as well as assuming the Embassy Suites is delivered to the market by 2021, and based upon an occupancy rate of 65%, which is about where the market is now. It's been ticking up. Even with Cavalier through June of this year, I don't know how much you've had this reported to you yet, through June of this year, you've actually had an increase in occupancy, even though you've had new product come online in the market. Virginia Beach has actually been amazing, except for the, going back to 2005, except for the really deep part of the recessionary period in 2007, 2008 into 2009. You've added rooms and have seen rate and occupancy increase even after the addition of the rooms. Typically, you actually see a decrease in the market in terms of rate and occupancy. This market's done exceedingly well in terms of holding its own as rooms have been delivered into this market, again, since 2005, except for that period. I think right post-2006 was when you started to see a decrease and then started to key back up again. You also have restaurant expenditure when day trips increase. So to put this into perspective for you, since 2003, you've grown from 6.9 to 8.9 million visitors in terms of day trippers. They're coming to the market from outside of 50 miles, based upon the new Longwoods International Study that you have. Some of the years, it's actually increased by 9% per year. And based upon expenditure, there's been demand over that period for additional 100,000, 125,000 square feet of additional retail and restaurant space, exclusively restaurant and bar space in the market, just from the increase in growth from day trip, day visitation. We've actually, so for every 100,000 visitors, there's about 6,000 to 7,000 new square feet that demanded in terms of the market. We've done no projection of this number. And the reason is, it's very difficult during, at any given time, to do a projection of this number. But it's out there, and it's something, in terms of conservatively, kept it out of the analysis, but nevertheless is a key driver within terms of your growth and demand within the market. We've also looked at the Sports Center, expected to generate 90, over 90,000 room nights. Persons per room are higher than the remainder of the market, largely because you have a bunch of kids. It's the reason why you see so many signs in your hotels that say, "Please be quiet," because you have so many kids running around, in terms of the halls. So this is, you know, the hotels love it and hate it at the same time, but certainly, given the seasonal aspects of the Sports Center, this is an important aspect of driving demand in this market and economic output as well. We think that there's over 51,000 square feet of retail and 25,000 square feet of office. We've looked at the performance space, based upon David's numbers. We've looked at the Wave Garden and the impact of the Wave Garden and the other gates that Mike spoke about, Nat Geo and the Bridge as well, which is a very exciting new venue also. So in terms of summary, and just kind of wrapping this all up in terms of how much demand we think is going to get generated by 2021 from these new uses, we think there's demand for additional 175,000 square feet of retail, entertainment, square foot space, experiential entertainment. And in terms of restaurants, another 98,000 square feet between now and 2021 in terms of restaurant. There's always demand also, that 41,000 at the bottom of the chart is always generated because there's other non-retail that takes retail space, health, urgent care centers, things like dry-clean drop stores that don't get counted in the retail number, but represent about 15% of any center like this. And so we think that there's demand overall of over 314,000 additional square feet in the district overall. So this is not peculiar to the site. But when you compare that to the development program, the 314,000 to 244,000 at the Wave, and Mike and I had slightly different numbers, we're about 20,000 square feet off, given when some of this analysis goes, but it's only 20,000 square feet, and minus the Cavalier Oceanfront Marriott, which has another 28,000 of restaurant space that's coming online, there's actually net opportunity for 42,000 square feet of additional space to be developed in the market. And we ran a number of scenarios where we squeezed these numbers, tried to do more sales per square foot in terms of retail or restaurants that would drive down the square feet demanded. We dealt with the office workers, looked at it different ways. And under virtually every scenario, we saw that demand by 2021, this forward-looking analysis, actually exceeded the amount of supply that was being delivered to the market. So there's a high degree of comfort in terms of the delivery of this amount of retail, entertainment, restaurant space into the market to be able to accommodate it without displacing other existing business that's already in the market. We also went through an economic impact analysis. Mike talked about the program, the 300 some odd million dollars in construction that creates, over the life of the project, 2,300 jobs, probably two-year construction period, so that would be per year on an average annual basis, it'd be half that number. So about 1,250 jobs indirect and induced effect were measured using the INPLAM model, 3,600 jobs overall over the life of the construction period. And then in terms of ongoing employment, recurring employment, once the project is stabilized, in total, 2,000 jobs, including the indirect and induced effect, $148 million in economic output overall. We've also looked at the fiscal analysis, and what does it mean for the cities and the city's coffers as well, in terms of tax revenue? And you can see, we did quite a detailed analysis, broken down by venue, by the type of taxes that are actually generated. Is it sales tax? Is it emissions tax? Is it prepared foods? In the case of the surf park, is it the propitatory sports tax that you've now implemented? Business license taxes as well. And so we've done an analysis that we have about $5.9 million in total taxes that we believe are going to get generated, net of the ad valorem tax, which we've also done an analysis for, based upon comparables within the market today. So we've taken the best-in-class of what actually exists in the market to be able to establish a basis for what the ad valorem taxes might be, for at least ones that you could do it for, certainly the office and the retail and the residential. And we believe that there's demand for additional, or rather, generation of an additional $2.2 million of ad valorem taxes over the period, per year, which would increase. We've worked with the city staff in terms of developing a net present value analysis over a 20-year period. Obviously, if you have questions about it at any point, we'd be happy to answer any of them, and I know the city's city staff has done its own analysis as well. But overall, our sense is this project is not going to cause any displacement of any substance whatsoever. The cost of the growth in the market has nothing to do with this project. You're just not going to see, you need new space to be able to fill it, and creates a substantial amount of economic benefit as well as fiscal benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And our last consultant today is Andy Hill, Director of Consulting Services, Desmond, Design Management, who will be speaking briefly on the parking demand.
Good afternoon. My name is Andy Hill. I am the Director of Consulting Services for Desmond. I am based out of Boston. We are a national parking consulting firm, made up of architects, engineers, scientists, and analysts. I am joined today by my associates, John Judge and Alex Pounds, from our D.C. office, and we're happy to be back here in Virginia Beach, working with the city. We were involved in the Town Center project, which involved a lot of the methodology that you're going to see today. Parking is in my blood. I am a child of Flint, Michigan. Most of my family built cars, designed cars, repaired cars, so parking is part of what I do. I love what I do. I'm very passionate about it. I would love to read you every word in the 23-page technical memorandum that was submitted to you, but time and the Geneva Conference prohibit me from doing that, so what I want to do today is give you kind of a high-level overview of what shared parking is, how it applies to your project, and what our findings were from analyzing the project going forward. So what is shared parking? Shared parking is a methodology, and it was a methodology that was established by the Urban Land Institute and the International Council of Shopping Centers. Urban Land Institute represents primarily real estate professionals. International Council of Shopping Centers represents property owners. And one of the, both of these groups came to the conclusion about 30 years ago that they were building much more parking than their complexes actually needed, but they had no way to quantify that. At the time, they were building typically according to local code or according to assumptions, which said, "If you have X amount of retail, you have to provide four spaces per thousand for that. If you have restaurant, you might have to provide another 10 spaces per thousand on top of that. If you throw office in there, well, that may be another 3.5 spaces per thousand. If you add up all of those needs, that's all the parking you're ever going to need." And on the surface, that makes sense, but we also know from practical experience that the demand for parking for different land uses fluctuates, according to time of day, time of year. Anybody who's ever gone to any type of shopping center in December will tell you that that experience is dramatically different from the same type of experience you might have if you go in January, because there are variations in use. What shared parking did is it quantified statistically those variations in use, according to the different land uses, according to time of day, according to time of year. It did this through empirical analysis, people going out, people like myself, going out to count cars around different land uses here and study the variation in demand according to time of day and time of year and be able to quantify that in a series of ratios. What this methodology then allows you to do is look at the project as an organic whole, rather than accumulation of individual components. It allows you to manipulate some stock national statistics to reflect local conditions, which may be specialized. And what it ends up doing is allowing you to project what you're going to need for that project as an organic whole at the busiest hour of the year and design against that, the assumption being, if you have enough parking spaces to meet that busiest hour, you should have enough parking to meet your needs the other 8,759 hours during the course of the year, provided that you manage it effectively. This ends up resulting in a parking supply that is both fiscally sustainable and environmentally sustainable. One of the things we've certainly become aware of, and heard Mr. Culpepper talk a little bit about it here, is the impact of stormwater runoff and impervious surface. Well, parking, by definition, is a very large impervious surface. When you can reduce that, you can reduce the amount of runoff that you're looking at and expand on green space. So these illustrations kind of show you what shared parking is in concept and what it isn't. On the far right, you can see the idea that parking spaces can serve different users at different times of the day and year according to their need. On the left, what you're seeing is shared parking as it's defined in Washington, D.C. So this is the project that we were initially presented with, and what we had to do with this project is we had to break it down into defined land use categories, because land use drives demand in the parking world here. So we sat with the developer in the city. We went through the project. We came up with a clear understanding of what the program was. Keynote in this here, when we ran our analysis, we ran our analysis against a planned supply of 1,935 spaces. Now, I heard Mr. Culpepper talk a little bit earlier about 2,005 spaces. Of the 2,005 spaces, 70 of those are on street. We wanted to reserve those for general public, so we restricted our analysis to just those that were contained within the project. And the first step that we did is we applied these land use values to some basic demand ratios. And these are these empirical values that I was discussing about, where people have gone out and taken a look at actual land uses, office buildings, restaurants, retail shops, et cetera. And they've studied them over a period of time and been able to identify what the relationship is between that parking and that land use at the busiest hour that was observed here. So these ratios represent that kind of absolute peak. And if you were to calculate the demand by applying these ratios to it and then adding up all of those numbers, you would have an approach similar to numbers, you would have an approach similar to the approach that ULI and ICSC were looking at 30 years ago, before they started developing this. One of the things that, uh, that we do whenever we come in to a project is we immediately look to understand some of the different dynamics that might impact, impact these ratios, because these ratios are stock and standard based over studies that have extended over a wide geographic area in a long period of time. They're all set at the 85th percentile standard, which is, uh, in layman's speak, um, pretty much, uh, one notch below the various high, very highest observation that was made of that pool here, um, during the course of those studies. None of those reflect the impact for people who may be arriving at the site by means other than a single occupant vehicle. And in every community, you need to look at adjusting to reflect that impact here. We call that a modal adjustment, because it reflects the percentage of folks who may be arriving on the site by means other than a single occupant vehicle, carpooling, taxiing, Uber, Uber, train, plane, automobile, um, shared with other users here, all of those are alternate modes of transportation. Most of these we drew from, uh, either US Census statistics specific to this area, on journey to work, or we drew them from, um, discussions with city staff regarding observations and understanding of modal split and other users. Uh, capture, the best way to describe capture is, uh, the individual who was working in the office tower takes a break at 10 o'clock in the morning, they go downstairs to Starbucks, they get themselves a cup of coffee. Uh, when you're measuring demand, you're measuring the demand associated with that user as it applies to the office building, not that trip to Starbucks. That trip to Starbucks doesn't necessarily generate any new or additional demand, you've already credited that demand of that use with the office building here. So what capture does, is it prevents you from double-counting users who are, uh, captive on the property for one use but patronizing another. Most of those folks are usually office workers, um, or residents or hotel guests. Uh, you also have a fairly large captive population in around the immediate area, uh, that will also be coming onto the site by means other than a single occupant vehicle here. Local adjustments don't necessarily apply to this project, but in the interest of thoroughness, I thought I'd throw them out there. Those are usually done when you have a live project that you can take counts on and compare to model output. What you cannot make serve-up adjustment for in quantifiable capture, modal split, becomes, uh, the local adjustment to be able to tune the model specifically to the existing conditions before you measure out future need. So the first step is to take these adjusted ratios and apply the land use information to get some gross demand projections. Again, these are similar to the projections that you would make under standard zoning code here, where you're accumulating all of your uses at the same time, adding them up, assuming that all of those land uses are going to reach peak need at the exact day, same hour, the exact same day throughout the course of the year. One of the things that I wanted to point out to folks here is, as we started to look at this, one of the things we were aware of was that the Performing Arts Center, um, was going to have a significant effect. As a matter of fact, uh, at 3,500 seats, which was the capacity that we were modeling through at this time, uh, that could project demand up to, um, 500, excuse me, 619 spaces on a weeknight, uh, up to 669 spaces on a weekend. When that venue was not in performance, um, the profile was going to look much different than when it was in performance, so we wanted to look at that both ways. Once we'd established these gross demand ratios, we then had to show the fluctuation in demand according to time of day and time of year. These are some line graphs which demonstrate the statistical, um, adjustments, and they also to some degree demonstrate our understanding as consumers, uh, of the cycles of use for these different land uses. For example, the yellow line shows, um, cinema presence during the course of the year, and we know that typically, uh, during the summer, a lot of your blockbuster movies are getting rolled out, attendance in the cinema, cinema goes up substantially, comes down in the fall, starts to climb back up, and then right around the Christmas season, it rockets back up again with another major release. You can sort of see that trending here as you're looking at the graph. This was, uh, calculated statistically through the model as we're projecting future need. Same de, same deal with hourly presence. The, uh, brown line that starts around 75% dips down and then starts climbing up in the evening, that is the curvature of typical residential use through a typical weekday, where we see folks leaving, going to work, going to do their various business, coming back at the end of the day, uh, and starting to reoccupy that space and drive up the presence here. And again, this shows you some of the ebb and flow, give and take between these different land uses. When you project this out, it ends up looking something like this bar graph right here. This is a representation of the busiest hour, um, when you are looking at this project without assuming that there is some sort of event performance in there. And when you look at this project without an event performance, it's really going to have its greatest need in December. No surprise, it's a significant amount of retail presence within the project, and its greatest need is going to occur around 2:00 in the afternoon on the December weekday, when you're going to have need for about 1,800 spaces, which is still about 140 spaces shy of what their planned supply is here. So we could judge, under a non-event status on a weekday, uh, that the project had adequate, adequate supply in order to meet its need. On a non-event weekend, um, we have an even bigger cushion here. We're really looking at a peak demand in the neighborhood of 1,600 spaces against 1930, 1,600 spaces against 1935 in supply, which gave you a buffer of about 328 spaces, uh, when you look at that peak demand. Now, when you look at an event, if you're looking at a 3,500-seat sold-out event, you are going to be looking at demand that shifts dramatically. At this point, the project that is an organic whole starts to look at reaching peak demand in July. And as it reaches peak demand in July, that event is driving a significant amount of the demand, and by 7:00 at night, if you've got a 30, 3,500-seat show sold out, you're looking at a demand that's going to exceed your planned supply by about 10 spaces. Now, this is not unusual, especially in urban centers with performing arts component here. Very rarely do these design to meet the absolute peak of this type of demand if there are other assets that are available in the area to pick this up. The reason that you typically don't design to meet that is because the amount of, um, patronage, the amount of attendance in events can fluctuate substantially, uh, and it is a significant investment in both land and resources in order to build against, uh, these events that may only occur one, two, three times a year. If you have available capacity in the area that can catch the spillover, your best bet, from an environmental standpoint, from a fiscal standpoint, is to try and manage that use, that overflow during those events, and make the use of those other assets, rather than to build brick and mortar to meet them here. In the evening, uh, on a weekend here, again, peak of July, if we've got a sold-out event, we could have as many as 300 cars of demand in excess of what the planned supply is within this project here. Now, something to note, if you look at this graph and I substitute a 3,500-seat show for 3,000-seat show, there's more than adequate capacity in order to meet that need. If I take this graph and instead of running it at a 3,500-seat event, I run it at a 2,000-seat event, again, you have adequate capacity to meet this need. So what we need to think in terms of is designing a management plan to address these issues when they overrun, uh, the planned supply. And the good news is there are multiple options within the area that are available. Uh, in and around the immediate area, you have 70 curbside spaces, uh, that could capture some of that overflow. Uh, we know from prior studies done in the area here, uh, that there are over 600 spaces in commercial lots and adjacent parcels here that are also available to capture some of that overflow when you have that odd major event that packs the house here. And another 900 spaces beyond that in a three-block radius in and around this particular property. There are also options to establish satellite parking and shuttle options, the Convention and Sports Center. The city right now is working on improved shuttle service that will actually connect to other modes of use, uh, coming into the area, and so you may have the ability to mitigate some of this projected demand with greater use of transit coming in and out of the area and better connections to that transit. You always have the option to augment your capacity temporarily through assisted or valley parking. Uh, in Boston, we call this stack parking, but it is the ability with a force to go out and actually use spaces within the facility that wouldn't otherwise be employed as standard parking spaces to, in the short term, augment your capacity, park more cars within the property, park them in the aisle, if you will. Then there is the other option, uh, and this is not unusual, especially, uh, in mixed-use developments that have this type of performing arts venue, to set up a plan that the night that you're going to have an event, you can look at relocating on a temporary basis, uh, nondiscretionary users. This is a nice way of saying that, uh, some of your employees are going to be directed on the nights when there's a major event coming in, to go parked at another off-site location and take the shuttle back and forth to work. And again, this is a very common practice. Um, I know this has been a very high-level, um, review, I thank you for your time and attention, and I look forward to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Paul, and Nick, and Michael, and David. I appreciate all your work. Mayor, uh, members of council and Development Authority, that concludes our briefings, and we are prepared to move to executive session.
Okay, I now, uh...
If you have questions, uh, I'm sure the panel can answer them.
We'll, we'll deal with those, any questions in the executive session. I now call to order the special formal session of Virginia Beach City Council. I will read the letter calling this special meeting. In accordance with the Virginia Beach City Count, uh, City Code Section 2-21, and by authority vested in me, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session, Virginia Beach City Council, Tuesday, August 14, 2018, Building 19 Municipal Complex, 2416, Courthouse Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia, following the workshop session, which begins at 1:30 on Tuesday, August the 14, 2018. There will be a special formal session convened in closed session for the sole purpose of discussing the Dome project. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: public contract, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 29 Dome Site Project may have a motion. Motion's made, and seconded. Madam Clerk, read the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Ms. Henley.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. Earn.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
10 to 0.
Thank you. I will now turn the floor over to Chair, Chair Lady Wood, for the VVDAs' consideration of a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-311, 3711. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: public contract, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A29. Your motion?
So moved.
Second. Linda, would you?
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Mueller.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Strange.
Yes.
Ms. Wood.
Yes.
Carries it 6 to 0.
We would now go, uh, prepare to go into closed session. Everybody other than the members of the City Council, the Economic Development Authority, and their staffs, would please excuse us.